This formal meeting of the Board of Education for November 24, 2015 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. This evening, we are missing Director Knowles and Director Kurler, and I'd like to extend our condolences from the board to Director Kurler, who is mourning the loss of his father. Ms. Powell, do we have any changes?
We do. We have moved the board's priority agenda item to December 1st.
Our first order of business is superintendent's report. Superintendent Smith?
And I'd like to first welcome our Grant High School lacrosse team. Thank you for showing up in such force tonight. The first thing I'd like to just share with you is the Be Kind Online campaign. And we had hundreds of PPS middle school and high school students who participated in National Be Kind Online Day last month. A national organization called Beyond Differences started Be Kind Online, and students attended assemblies and special activities to raise awareness about social isolation and cyberbullying across our district. As part of the event, Ms. Black Oregon, Octavia Chambers, visited three of our schools to share experiences on social isolation and how to overcome it. Students at schools that Chambers visited signed a pledge to be kind online, and students at other schools also signed the pledge. Roseway Heights students produced a brief video promoting kindness. That video won a Beyond Differences national contest. And Grant High School students also put together a powerful video about cyberbullying, and we're going to take a look at that right now.
I've been labeled as this on Twitter before.
I'm working on a photo project, photographing students at the school with signs that they -- of words that they've been called on social media. And we're thinking that it will be a powerful project so that people can see that bullying people isn't -- it's not a faceless crime.
The words are shocking, and I think from the student's point of view, again, they want the -- they want there to be disclosure, and they want there to be honesty about what they've experienced.
I'm participating in this because I personally have been affected by cyberbullying, and I know many of my peers are affected by cyberbullying, and it's not -- it's very harmful to people's emotions and to their daily lives.
I hope that students at the school will see this and realize that calling people mean names on social media and bullying people on social media, it's not -- they can't get away with it. It's real people that they're affecting every single day.
What I hope students leave with because of this is just a continued awareness of how harmful what they're posting online and the things that they're saying online can be to other students. Sometimes it's unintentional, but I think oftentimes it's being used as a means to lash out at someone, someone that you maybe don't even know.
Actually, I just want to thank students who've taken leadership in this and great video to our Grant students, so thank you. I also want to thank hundreds of parents, students, teachers, and neighbors who've been turning out for the community meetings on proposals to balance enrollment to strengthen our schools. Over 2,000 people have attended 11 meetings over the last couple of weeks. The final community meeting is actually tonight at King School. And next week, we're partnering with the Portland Association of Teachers to engage a number of teachers, and Super SAC is holding a student forum as well, so we're getting some specific -- all those students and teachers have attended all of these forums as well. So we're grateful to our partners who've stepped up to support this important cross-school, cross-community, and cross-cultural conversation. The Center for Intercultural Organizing, the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Latino and Latino Network have all sponsored meetings, along with the Black Parent Initiative, NAIA Family Center, Apoно, Concerned Parents for Public Schools, and Portland Council, PTA, who've all played important roles in getting the word out. The District Ride Boundary Review Advisory Committee, or DBRAC as we call it, have been listening and present at all of these forums. They will then meet and put together a recommendation to me that will then ultimately -- I'll do whatever changes I do, and then it'll come to the board early, like, February. So I look forward to seeing that, and we've heard a lot of passion at these town hall meetings. Chelsea Clinton visited Mount Tabor Middle School this month to encourage young people to get involved and make changes in their world. She read passages from her new book, Get Informed, Get Inspired, and Get Going, which is written for young people to show them that their voices count and they can make a difference in the world. And it actually did inspire a lot of young people to get engaged, because we've been getting letters just saying, "Here are some of the things that I'm getting engaged in" from people who saw her, and she was great. She did a really good job and passionate about her book. U.S. Representative Earl Blumenauer visited Lent School earlier this month to learn more about a National Science Foundation grant and how gardens are helping students learn about science. Lent Elementary School is also using their garden, and produce from the garden is used in lunches at Lent School. After touring the garden, Representative Blumenauer read to students and took questions from the students regarding the environment and other issues that are important to them. Hundreds of Latino parents and students attended an event called Steps Towards Graduation that was held at Cesar Chavez in late September, and an additional session was then held at Lent School. I'm sorry, I gotta do water. The day-long event was focused on celebrating Latino families in our schools and also informing parents about opportunities available to students. Sorry, I'm gonna just die. I know, I'm in the car.
Take a break.
Period. I'll just say, this was a good event. Our fall sports teams. I want to give a shout-out to our high school sports teams that had great success this fall, and to all of our student athletes for their participation and hard work. Lincoln High School's boys soccer team won the state 6A soccer tournament earlier this month. This is the first time that Lincoln Boys Team has won state title since 1976. Lincoln Girls Soccer finished fifth at state this year. Together, the boys and girls teams had the best finish in state of any high school soccer team in the state also. Lincoln's Boys Cross Country Team took second place at state, and Wilson High School Boys' Cross Country Team took third place. Grant High School's Cross Country runner Ella Donahue won her third straight individual state title by breaking the course record. And Lincoln's varsity football team made it to the quarterfinals in the Oregon 6A tournament. They defeated football powerhouse Grants Pass two weeks ago to take on Sherwood this past Friday, and Sherwood beat them, but we are excited that they made it to the quarterfinals, so woo-hoo! We've also had a number of our staff who have been recognized for their hard work. Alliance at Benson High School Drake Shelton was recently named Oregon Vice Principal of the Year by the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators. Shelton has created programs to boost student attendance and increase graduation rates, and we're really proud of him. This is a really great honor to be named, so this is statewide Vice Principal of the Year, so congratulations, great. We have six outstanding Portland Public School teachers who've been named Civic Scholars by their state representatives. The Civic Scholars Program is put on by the Classroom Law Project and is part of a statewide initiative to provide high-level professional development opportunities for civics teachers around the state. The teachers chosen so far are Patricia O'Shea from Dunaway Elementary School, Katie Moore from Franklin High School, George Tenich and Emily Hensley from Lincoln High School, Mike Bauer from Roosevelt High School, and Lisa Southar, a teacher at Selwood Middle School. So congratulations to all of them. They will receive free admission to the Civics Conference for Teachers, which is held at the state Capitol in Salem on December 4th, so that'll be very exciting, and congratulations to all of them. There's also -- we've had a number of other outstanding staff who've been recognized so far this year. Nancy Sullivan from Madison High School, who received the Oregon Association of School Librarians High School Secondary Library Teacher of the Year Award. Jennifer Soshawa from Grant High School, who won the Oregon Association of School Librarians High School Library Professional of the Year Award. Madison High School Susan Russell, who won the Oregon Art Education Association's 2015 Rookie of the Year Award. And Lincoln's Tim Swinehart, who was named Educator of the Year by the Oregon Council for Social Studies. So congratulations to all of you. Our annual book harvest continues to be a success. This is the third year that we have held the book harvest, which is really about collecting books and sending them home with children to build their home libraries. The Harvest has collected 16,000 books this year, and PPS Transportation Department and our bus service, First Student, volunteered to bring the donated books from our school collection sites to the Children's Book Bank. The Book Bank has been an ongoing partner with Portland Public Schools, and we are very grateful for their partnership and their efforts, and it has. It's been very exciting to be able to send backpacks filled with books home with kids for their vacation, their breaks. And finally, Megan Hall and her Life Skills Team at Grant High School are doing a terrific job educating students, and I'm glad we have such a good Grant audience to be here with us for this little clip that we're going to see. Every Tuesday, these students take a field trip to New Seasons Market near the school to place lunch orders for Grant teachers. The activity gives students the opportunity to learn and use skills, including reading, counting, account change, using a crosswalk, communicating, and most of all, building self-confidence. So here's a video about this project.
Before we go, we've got a lot of orders, by the way, guys. When we come back, we're also gonna get a chance to do some deliveries, okay? Megan Hall, intensive skills classroom teacher at Grant High School. We're going to New Seasons, and we're gonna pick up some lunch orders for teachers. Okay, what is it? Look, look, cross! So we're really good about going to the crosswalk. Once we have the walk signal, look both ways, then be able to go across. And I've had a lot of parents tell me that through our weekly practice, they've seen a difference at home. Nice, Shayla, good caddy. And then, once we get there, we really kind of have a production line. I have students that are responsible to go turn in orders. I have students that are responsible to go get chips for teachers that order chips.
Orange chips.
I have students that staple the orders to the bag so that we can stuff the sandwiches inside. So they're working on their reading skills and identifying matching letters, so there's a lot of skills that are happening. And then, of course, once an order's completed, they go to the cash register, and they get to practice the real money. And because we get all sorts of different types of money, you know, sometimes they might have a $20 bill to work with, sometimes they might have two fives and a one, or they might have all ones, and knowing how to get correct change back.
A lot of these kids kind of are reclusive in themselves. They don't speak, so taking them out in the community, they're able to use their communication skills.
And then bringing back the orders, and the teachers are really happy to get them. Staff has been really supportive.
Hello.
Lunch delivery.
Thank you very much.
For teachers, we don't have time to get out of the building with a 33-minute lunch, and so now we get a fantastic sandwich brought right to us, and it's really fun.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Being independent is one of the most important things, and my students have that right to be independent, and it's my job to make sure that they get to be independent.
Representative Davidson, you have your report this evening?
I do. So I would like to report that the superintendent's student advisory committee is going very well. We have had four meetings so far, and we have had most of the high schools represented. We're still recruiting, because it's a long process, but we're happy of the kids that we have now. At the moment, we are gearing up to host a student forum for the DBRAC proposed scenarios that is planned for next Wednesday, December 2nd, at Benson High School from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. We encourage students from all over the district to come and hear the scenarios explained and to provide impact input for DBRAC. Input students provide will help shape the new boundaries. I also had the pleasure of seeing Franklin High School's production of A Midsummer Night's Dream, and it was beautifully done, so I would like to thank all of the students, parents, and staff who contributed to the play. Last Thursday, I was able to tour construction sites of the remodels occurring at both Franklin and Roosevelt High School with fellow board members Constan and Knowles, as well as Superintendent Smith. It was amazing to see what these schools looked like during this time of change. I would like to thank the people who took time out of their day to guide us through these construction sites. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Powell, we have some students signed up for testimony this evening?
We have five. The first two are Sawyer Montgomery and Sprout Chin.
You guys here? You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear right in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on, and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at this time. Thank you for being here.
So I guess I'll start. My name is Sawyer Montgomery, S-A-W-Y-E-R-M-O-N-T-G-O-M-E-R-Y. I'm here with Grant Lacrosse. So members of the board, thank you for taking the time to let me speak on behalf of this team. I'm a senior at Grant High School, and I've played lacrosse for all four years. I've also been a member of the student-run Grant magazine for all four years. And as a student journalist, I really like facts and data, so I'm gonna share some with you today. On a national level, youth sport participation is in a decline. From 2008 to 2012, 4% less youth from ages 6 to 17 are participating in basketball, soccer, baseball, and football. Lacrosse shows a different story. Looking at the same survey, same period of time, participation has increased by 158%. If you take that back to 2005 and carry it to today, that number exceeds 300%. And what does that look like at Grant? When I was a freshman, there were 16 total players on the team. Now, our men's program is reaching 50 strong. Some of them are here today. And then, among those 50 people, nearly 20 of them are just incoming freshmen alone, so it's trending upwards. My point is this: Over the last several years, our club has made significant efforts with the athletic department to gain fair field rates. We have been responded to much like a niche sport such as ultimate frisbee. While these sports undoubtedly have a place in our community, we think that the amount of athletes that stand with our sport, as well as the effort that we put towards the sport, merits a larger response from the governing bodies presiding above us. I don't see many niche sports weight training three days a week. I don't see many niche sports combining their men's and women's programs for nearly 100 student athletes. I don't see them doing skills training early mornings on the weekends and running a highly competitive offseason club team on Sundays. We're competing against top programs in the state, such as those in the Lake Oswego and Westland School District, which practice on district fields as if they were a school sport. Paying upwards of $75 an hour only puts us one step behind. I know you can't give us Portland Park and Rec fields. What I, standing for our team, request is your backing as we proceed to legitimize lacrosse and thus gain space on available PPS campus fields. As experience has shown, we can't do it alone. Your support as esteemed leaders of PPS would not only earn our gratitude, but would also earn the legitimacy and field space that we as dedicated athletes deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a senior at Grant High School, and I'm here on behalf of many of the students at Grant who are concerned about the layout of the redesign. The ed specs implements 100% utilization model, which would eliminate many of the classrooms and replace them with large common areas. I want to briefly share with you some of my experiences at Grant and how classrooms have been a safe haven for me while navigating through high school. My freshman year, I struggled with making friends. Most days, I found myself without anyone to eat lunch with, so I would go to my English teacher's room. If Ms. Rotaback wasn't in a meeting, we would chat while eating our lunch, and sometimes the classroom was busy with other students, which would make it feel a little less lonely. By my sophomore year, I was deeply involved with the Queer Straight Alliance at Grant. Being a queer student in high school is tricky, but I could always count on the safety of Ms. Todd's room during lunch -- during and outside of QSA meetings. As soon as I walked through the familiar doorway and could see the pictures that made her walls feel like home, everything felt like it was going to be okay. Halfway through my junior year, my best friend passed away, and I often sought refuge in the choir room, allowing the tapping of the piano keys to become louder than my thoughts. I wouldn't be able to inform the relationships I have with teachers without knowing that the room was a safe place for me. It is for this reason that I urge you to reconsider the layout of the redesign. As nice as common areas would be, classrooms are far more important and should take precedence. The classrooms that I've spent the last four years in have shaped me almost as much as the teachers that habitate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chin. This is a problem that we seem to have had at Franklin also, so are you saying that there's a -- that there is 100 -- basically 100% utilization of the classrooms? I mean, can you lead me through how you got to this?
Yeah, so the redesign calls for 100% utilization, which means instead of -- I think we have somewhere over 70 classrooms now, and it would be reduced to 40 classrooms, which -- so the teachers would move to the classrooms. Teachers wouldn't have their own classrooms. Instead, they'd have large office spaces with cubicles, so several teachers to a room.
70 to 40?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much for sharing that, bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Annabelle Schwartz and Ethan Hess.
Hi, my name is Ethan Hess, E-T-H-A-N-H-E-S-S. I'm a junior at Grant High School, and I've been playing lacrosse since the fourth grade. I'm with the lacrosse team, and I'm here today to talk to you about treating lacrosse fairly, like any other varsity sport. So I've been playing lacrosse at Grant for every year that I've been at Grant, and if lacrosse doesn't deserve to be treated like any other varsity sport, then I don't know it does. Our coaches check our grades every week, like any other sport. We go to practice every day, like any other sport. The only difference really is that we're not OSAA-approved. Other schools have gone out and made lacrosse a varsity sport for their own school, like in Lake Oswego, Lakewood, and Newburgh, for example. We don't have to be OSAA-approved just to be respected like another varsity sport. I believe that it's unfair to me and my team that we are forced to pay much more than we can afford because we don't have this label of OSAA, even though we have all of the equalities of a varsity sport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annabelle Schwartz, A-N-N-A-B-E-L-L-E-S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z. I want to tell you a little bit about an issue that is currently plaguing our community. A few months ago, my counselor at Cleveland High School introduced me to a freshman girl who was struggling with a very serious problem. She had to attend school with her rapist, and not only did she have to see him, but she had to put up with his constant harassment as well. This included being called a cunt and a slut in the hallways and even threats of violence. After talking with her for a while, I learned that she was not the only one at Cleveland who had been sexually assaulted by him, and certainly not the only one to suffer from his harassment. Four other girls and a young trans man all talked about his assault against them. Eventually, the young girl I spoke with originally decided to go to the police. It did not surprise me when they reported to her mother that they were not interested in pursuing her case. As a survivor myself, I have heard the horror stories of women whose local police departments did not take their rape seriously. What surprised me is that the school did not seem interested either. When we have met with administrators, they have told us that everyone has a right to public school, even if that meant pushing these survivors out. When we ask them why they do not at least deal with the harassment, they say that it is complicated. They act as if it is something that our teenage minds cannot comprehend, like we do not already have to put up with the world of sexual violence that was thrust upon us. I don't say this to shame the Cleveland or its administrators, but I wanted to start a discussion about accessible and understandable sexual assault policies for PPS. I want to know why administrators will not use tools like Title IX to their full extent. I stand here to ask, where should students go if both their school and their police departments cannot or will not help them? Thank you.
Thank you. Director Buell, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Schwartz, can you give me a timeline on what you're talking about?
Um, so I was...
In other words, when did this begin, and where are we now? Have you been -- and when was the last time you went to your administrators?
The last time I talked to my school administrator, the first time I met with my principal, Principal O'Neill, was last Thursday, but we originally reported the case to the school at the beginning of the year, I think around September 1st, so the first week of September.
Is the harassment still continuing?
Yes.
Like, in the last 10 days?
Um, yes, even today. It's unfortunate, but it has escalated too.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, both of you. Ms. Powell, we have a few more students?
Yes.
We have one more, Molly Metz.
Hi, my name is Molly Metz. I'm a junior at Grant High School, and I'm a part of the Grant Girls Lacrosse Program. Oh, my name is M-O-L-L-Y-M-E-T-Z. So today, I'm here to try to talk about fundraising, but also how that plays into lacrosse not being recognized as an OSAA sport. A lot of our players spend a lot of time outside of practices and games fundraising on the weekends, in the evenings, at nights, when a lot of our players who are amazing students, athletes, and we spend a lot of time that we could be on the field or studying for tests and doing homework, you know, out in the community, trying to raise money for the rising field costs, just to get out on the field. And I think that this is a really big part of being a part of this team is doing the fundraising, which I feel, you know, not a lot of other teams have to do that are OSAA-recognized, so I think that any support that we could get from you would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a general question. I'm not sure of whom. Is there a movement within PIL, an active movement, to have lacrosse recognized? As a school, say?
Yes. Well, there's an active movement to probably apply it again to OSAA, to become a state-sanctioned sport. And one of the reasons we're here tonight that I was just gonna speak to in a little bit is other school districts have elected that lacrosse should be a Tier 1 state or school-sponsored sport, which doesn't require OSAA sanctioning. They've done it, and I don't know what the process is to do that, but that is a way that can immediately legitimize the sport.
Okay. And you'll be testifying?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on then to our rest of our public comment. We have, I believe, our first testimony. We're expecting Adam Wolfe and Amanda Cagle. Welcome.
I have three children currently in PPS, one at Lincoln High School, one at West Sylvan Middle School, and one at Forest Park Elementary. I'm here to speak in support of the basic outline of the I'm here to speak in support of the basic outline of the DIBRAC's proposed boundary changes and also against a soft boundary proposal that was considered and voted upon last time I was here at a board meeting. I have three main points to make, and so I guess I'm sort of speaking to something you're not actually voting on today, but I'm hopeful that you recall it when the vote comes up again. I have three points. First, that the DIBRAC process itself has built trust within the community. Second, that the proposal they put out is a good one. And third, that PPS needs to come up with a way to stop changing school boundaries so often. At one of the first meetings early last fall, a longtime principal spoke out on the issue of distrust that she sees between parents and PPS and that she believed that the source of that distrust was PPS's past practice of implementing changes that severely impact students and families with little to no community input or involvement. And someone heard that and DIBRAC was born. And there has been an enormous amount of community input and involvement in the process this time. It met for the better part of a year and heard testimony and research from hundreds of people. And people came together in those rooms and talked about all of those issues. The meetings got acrimonious often, but people were definitely heard. To shift now and adopt a proposal such as the soft boundary proposal, which was rejected by DIBRAC and rejected during that process, would be a slap in the face to all of the people who participated in that process. And why this matters is because research shows that parental involvement and trust is critical to improving student achievement. A three-year study of twelve Chicago schools found that parent trust was the key factor in promoting student achievement and effective school improvement. A similar study across thirty-nine countries found that parental involvement is actually more important than socioeconomic status in terms of improving and predicting student performance. So we really need to involve parents and earn and keep that trust in order to improve our schools. So I'm asking you, please don't undo the process that DIBRAC has begun. Second, the outlines, you know, the bigger outlines of the boundaries that they've done is a solid one. The committee spent the better part of a year researching and learning about all the issues facing our schools and their proposal demonstrates that expertise. It addresses overcrowding and underattended schools and more importantly, it keeps the kids in their communities. Research shows that community schools promote parental, critical parental involvement and kids' emotional development and academic achievement. Conversely, other research shows that when you bus kids out of their communities, test scores and parental involvement both go down while disciplinary suspensions go up. Keeping the kids in their communities also makes it easier for educators to do outreach to and improve that parental involvement. And just in conclusion, DIBRAC heard testimony on all of these issues and they, including the soft boundary proposal, and it was considered and rejected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have Cindy Dulcich and Stuart Montgomery? Welcome.
I'm Cindy Dulcich, C-I-N-D-Y-D-U-L-C-I-C-H, and I'm here tonight just to raise some awareness about the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. I am a fifth grade teacher at Beverly Cleary and I'm also a National Board Certified Teacher. I come with my colleague, who will be talking to you as well in just a few minutes. National Board is a voluntary advanced certification for teachers and I want to raise your awareness because I'm hoping that more Portland teachers can go through this program. My own personal story is, I was a teacher at Atkinson for twenty-two years, loved it, but every day I, something nagged at me that maybe I wasn't the best teacher I could be. So I went and got a master's degree, an endorsement in reading, an endorsement ESL, took every class imaginable, read every book, but I still had something that was missing, I thought. I wasn't doing justice to the children in front of me every day. And one day, just by serendipity, I walked by another teacher's classroom. She was a new hire from California. She was stellar, she was amazing. I was pretty spellbound at how she taught. And as I got acquainted with her, she told me she was a National Board Certified Teacher and that planted a seed in me. So several years down the road, after my kids had graduated from college, it was time for me to do this. It's kind of an expensive program, so I waited, I did it, and it absolutely transformed my teaching. It gave me confidence, it gave me intentionality. I teach very differently now, but I have a lot more confidence that I'm doing everything that I can for the children in front of me. So as my career is winding down, I feel an obligation to tell you about this fabulous program and how it can really change teachers. It really supports everything that Superintendent Smith wants to do, helping close the achievement gap, getting more kids to graduate from high school, getting our third graders to read to learn. So it's wonderful and I feel like I shouldn't be the only one able to do it, but more students or more teachers should be able to have that experience.
Thank you.
My name is Stuart, S-T-U-A-R-T, Montgomery, M-O-N-T-G-O-M-E-R-Y, and I sit before you as a representative of Grant High School men's and women's lacrosse programs. Lacrosse is a club sport, supporting over eighty athletes, male and female, and as such, one of the three largest sports at Grant with both sexes represented. Despite club status, lacrosse is run on the academic and athletic principles of all OSAA sports. Because of its club status, we support athletes of the other schools in the PIL, including Benson, Jefferson and Madison. Cleveland, Wilson and Lincoln also have men's and women's teams. No athlete is excluded from playing on the basis of the ability to pay. We have secured community sponsorships and gear to ensure all willing athletes can play this great sport. There is a history of lacrosse excellence in the PIL with Lincoln having won the state championship four times. We need the school board to be a champion for us on the following topics. One, legitimize lacrosse as a Tier One sponsored sport, as other school districts have done, so that district athletics and Grant administration can support us with their full power. Two, aid funding for Portland Park and Rec fields. Field costs are exorbitant and unsustainable for our clubs. Field costs have increased nearly three hundred percent in the last three years, rising to seventy-five dollars an hour in the Grant Bowl and at Delta Park. We have received mixed messages from district athletics and parks regarding our options and costs for both the past two thousand and fourteen season, along with what our costs will be moving forward. Three, maximizing our opportunities on our home field, the Grant Bowl. Unlike every other high school in the district, Grant students relinquish priority on their field at six, not seven PM. The PIL and parks has prioritized middle school athletes and for-profit programs over our high school athletes at Grant, both before and after six PM. Four, trying to determine the usage matrix of the other fields in the PIL and whether there is a place on those fields for these student athletes. This involves prioritizing these high school athletes over corporate partners who are able to pay full hourly costs. Lacrosse has sought a solution to the above problems, working with both parks and the PIL since the summer of two thousand and fourteen. Brian Seymour, our AD at Grant, has been immensely supportive and Mr. Marshall Haskins has expressed his support of our athletes, but his power has been limited by virtue of us not technically being an OSAA-sanctioned sport or recognized as a Tier One sanctioned sport. We need a champion who will stand up and say, these are our PIL athletes. They deserve equal affordable access to fields to be successful on their field of play. We need a champion who will say, if Lake Oswego and West Lynn will give their athletes in lacrosse equal field access, then we will too, because it's the right thing to do. Please step forward to ensure that these dedicated student athletes have an opportunity to play at a cost all families can afford and that all student athletes have the same access to facilities. We ask you to legitimize these athletes and to take a leadership role that will allow them to have the same chance of success that is provided to other school districts in the Portland metro area. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Director Beal?
I'd just like to say about Ms. Dulcich that when I came onto the school board in the first two weeks, I think that I was a school board member, I received at least twenty emails saying what a marvelous, outstanding and wonderful teacher she was. And I've always remembered that. In fact, I kind of used her as an example, hey, maybe we could get Cindy Dulcich to get in here and do these types of things. You know, and we should be talking to her about what she's doing. I mean, it was, they just raved about what a wonderful teacher she was out there at Atkinson. And I had a question for Mr. Stuart.
Likewise.
And it was, it was about what for-profit organizations are using the grant field that you would like to use?
So after seven PM on PIL fields, the priority in those fields, as I understand it, and no one has come forth to show me how those fields are used exactly, my understanding is the priority on those fields goes to community partners, no disrespect, but community private soccer clubs, PCU, Southeast Soccer Club. I know there was an issue last year at Cleveland High School where they almost gave the field away right out from underneath the JV soccer team. The same issue is happening all over the city and no one seems to want to share who uses those fields and when, and all I have heard is, they're all booked. Well, you can't tell me, I don't think, that they are all booked by PIL athletes until nine PM.
So you don't really know what-
I can't give you what's to claim.
I'd love to have you send me that if you get, if you can.
You could access that-
From the Parks Department.
You'd like to know the other way?
It's not parks.
Okay.
It's athletics. This, I'm talking about the PIL-owned fields.
So each athletic director would have that? I think, why don't you make a request to us to get you that information?
Can we get that?
We can get that information.
That'd be great.
Was that a request? We can get that information.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
We do have some more public testimony. Stacy Meyer and Mary Peveto? Peveto.
Hi, my name is Stacy Meyer, last name M-E-Y-E-R, and I am a fifth grade teacher at Beverly Cleary. I work with Cindy Dulcich and I'm also here to speak a little bit about National Board Certification. But specifically, I wanted to share my experience as a Washington teacher. This is my first year at PPS, but I spent ten years teaching in Washington State. Most recently, I spent the last seven years working up in the Evergreen School District in Vancouver, so as a Portland resident, I commuted. And four years ago, I went through the National Board Certification while working in the Evergreen School District. And I'm hoping that, I'd like to share some of the things that Washington State, but also some of the local school districts are doing to help support and encourage National Board candidates in Washington. The first thing I wanted to share is that Washington State ranks fourth in the nation for total number of National Board Certified Teachers. They have certified eight thousand one hundred ninety-six teachers and that accounts for fourteen percent of all Washington State teachers. When you compare this with Oregon, Oregon has certified only three hundred and thirteen National Board Certified Teachers, giving it a rank of thirty-eighth in the country. When I actually first started working at Beverly Cleary, Cindy Dulcich came up to me and said how excited she was to have another Board Certified Teacher at the school, told me I was number thirteen in the district. And I just have to share at my school, I was probably one of thirteen just in my school up at Evergreen. So why so many in Washington and what are they doing that's working so well? First of all, the state has given a five thousand dollar stipend to National Board Certified Teachers every year. Additionally, if you work in a school that's designated as challenging, you get an additional five thousand dollars every year. So teachers are earning possibly up to ten thousand dollars more each year. And just significantly, you know, thirty-four point two percent of these certified teachers are working in challenging schools, working with some of our highest need students. The state also has implemented some supports to help teachers through the process. They have a two-day conference to help prepare candidates for the process and also allow for a conditional loan to help pay for the certification process. As Cindy mentioned, it can be upwards to about two thousand dollars to pay for it. But Washington State allows candidates to take out a loan on their first stipend, so as long as you certify, you repay that loan back at your first stipend. Additionally, many districts have offered supports to help teachers through the process. In Evergreen, I participated in a support group with a cohort. We worked a group of teachers together through the process, led by a trained and paid facilitator, meeting once a month, three hours in the evening, to kind of help guide us through the process. And this was crucial for me to succeed as a candidate. Moving forward, just thinking about what we could be doing at PPS, I would really like to see our district adopt some of these models to help and support and encourage teachers in our district to become certified and National Board.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you to the members of the board for allowing me to give testimony. My name is Mary Peveto, P-E-V-E-T-O. I have three children at Portland Public Schools. Well, no, I have two. My oldest graduated last spring from Lincoln High School. I have one currently at Lincoln High School. Both of those attended Harriet Tubman Leadership Academy for Women and then my youngest is at Chapman Elementary School. And I am here to, to comment on the DIBRAC process and even though I feel like probably jumping the gun a little bit, I'm going to save sort of our personal testimony about what we feel personally, but speak to you a little bit from the Chapman community about concerns about really what was not included. We understand that it was a very exhaustive and volunteer-driven process, but we were looking to, we were really eagerly anticipating seeing these scenarios to help alleviate the pressures already on the Central City Chapman School, where we have seven hundred students currently. When, and to put that in context, my older daughters, when they attended, that's double the enrollment of what they experienced when they were at Chapman, three hundred and fifty. We also understand that a right-sized school is around five hundred for elementary. So we were really looking to the scenarios that the DIBRAC committee were going to come out to provide some relief and some solutions. And, and what it has made us question, I think you're going to hear from possibly a lot in the community, and again, I'll save my testimony and Board Member Konstantin, Director Smith, you were at the listening session about the experience of children in these very crowded schools, but we're really concerned that there is such a disconnect between our city's planning and growth process, and it is going to continue to grow, especially in the central core. The, the new pressures of affordable housing, you know, goals are really just not being included, that we're really looking at a DIBRAC process that is looking behind us and we're not looking forward to the future of what our real pressures, especially Central City, is going to experience. And so we're very concerned that there are no solutions on the, on the horizon, not only to deal with the seven hundred kids that we have in our catchment, but the forty-seven new buildings, the four thousand six hundred units that are coming into Central City within ten blocks of the current catchment. So I guess that's what we would like to say is that, again, you know, the testimony about what our schools are experiencing, I think it's more just to, to ask that the board provide more pressure possibly on the city's engagement in this process, to be more bought into the work that they're doing up to three years out in development planning, that it gets better connected to the school's kind of real-time, immediate needs of taking care of these kids when they arrive on the doorsteps September 1st. So thank you very much for your time and appreciate the work that you're all doing.
Thank you. All right, additional public testimony. We have Gabriel Bolivar and Helen Kent. Thanks, guys.
And ladies.
And ladies.
Where's the ladies?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So, should we call up the other person?
Oh, yes.
We also have Ethan Medley.
Go ahead, Ms. Kent.
Okay, great. It's Heather Kent, for the record, K-E-N-T. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm the PTA President of Access Academy, also a parent of two students at that school. And I also want to speak to the DIBRAC process tonight again. I know, early in the process, but as a school that attracts students from all over the district, we've been a little bit of an outlier in the neighborhood discussions. We've attended our, our neighborhood school discussions and tried to make sure that Access had a voice in that process. But because we do attract students from fifty-four different neighborhood schools currently, our issues are a little bit different. Access Academy was envisioned as a K-12 school designed to meet the needs of highly intellectually gifted students. These students score in the ninety-ninth percentile of nationally normed tests and often don't have a peer group in a neighborhood school. They may have trouble making friends, are subject to bullying and do not learn to work hard to achieve in that setting. As a result, they can develop problems, severe depression, drop out of school, fail to thrive in a myriad of ways. And I personally, for our daughter, you know, that peer group has really been a lifeline for her at school. for her at school, um, allowing her to meet and make friends that we hope will last a lifetime. Access was relocated from Saban to Rose City Park in two thousand and two during the grant cluster boundary process, and through our improved admission process, support from the tag office, and better outreach, we're really helping the district meet its equity agenda for this group of students. We have with, through more equitable testing, the consistent notification to families that their students are eligible, um, the additional outreach and effort from the tag office to educate, um, and inform the tag liaisons within the schools, more and more families are becoming familiar with Access and applying. We have grown, um, we've been really fortunate to have had that support from the district, and we believe, um, in this process that we need to grow a little bit more. Right now, third grade is the entry point and there's not much room for any additional students. For this process, um, central location is also our biggest issue, and Mary just spoke to some of the issues that are, um, uh, causing crowding problems in the central part of the city. But because we're attracting kids from fifty-four different schools, a central location is really essential for Access in order to provide that equitable access. Kids are traveling forty-five to sixty minutes one way on the bus. Their parents would, um, put up with traveling further because it's such an important, um, benefit to be there. But it's, uh, needs to be, um, something that is relatively equal in access, um, to all students. So those are two main issues, and I'm sure you'll hear more from us, uh, in the future.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
My name is Ethan Medley, E-T-H-A-N-M-E-D-L-E-Y. I'm the physics teacher at Grant High School, and I'm speaking on behalf of many teachers in my building. I'm here to raise concerns about the Grant High School redesign, many of these same issues that Sprout discussed before. I'm also the parent of two future Grant students who are now in grades six and eight. The EdSpecs, the document that drives the redesign process, is implementing a model called a hundred percent utilization. It believes that the school's program works best when all classrooms are used all of the time, freeing up space for other uses. It's tempting to believe that well-chosen, non-classroom space might increase teaching and learning. We believe on the contrary that the school's most critical element is the classroom, and that this model, by decreasing classrooms, will decrease the quality of instruction, negatively impact student learning, and increase stressors and disorganization throughout the building. The EdSpecs severely underestimate the needed number of classrooms. At Grant, we currently have seventeen English teachers. In the EdSpecs, eleven rooms are designated for them. We currently have twelve math teachers for whom eight classrooms are dedicated. All departments face shortages of similar size. This means that most teachers will have to move classroom space at least once a day, some of these room changes needing to happen during five-minute passing times. PPS teachers are expected to post agendas and learning targets. We set up classroom materials and arrange furniture appropriate for each lesson. Many lessons are best taught with hands-on activities and visual reminders posted around the room. We celebrate and welcome our students by displaying their work on our walls. Carefully consider, excuse me, I've lost my, carefully consider what is lost in a building that requires constant room changes? How is the quality of instruction impacted? What happens when a student needs materials from a missed day, but those materials are in another room or in a teacher's cubicle? Most importantly, which of our students will be most impacted? Those with resources and strong school engagement, or those most likely to struggle in school? It's very much an equity issue. We believe these structural changes will create deeper disparities based on income, learning disabilities, language ability, and race. Building a school with a shortage of classrooms also deprives the school of flexibility to accommodate many potential scenarios. All signs point to population growth in Portland. Why design new buildings with built-in shortages? Room shares and teachers on carts are used in times of shortage and as a stopgap measure. Where is the evidence that one hundred percent utilization is best practice? Like open classrooms or modular buildings, it feels like a fad that masks common sense and constricts future choices. Grant High School staff are organizing around these ideas now. We don't want to turn this into a public spat that damages the possibilities for future bond measures or delays the grant remodel, but we do want a building that serves future Grant students, at least as well as our current one. You can help us by directing staff to reevaluate the EdSpecs or to allow architects permission to deviate from them. The community college model that is envisioned by the EdSpecs presents an attractive visual. Gigantic classrooms and increases in common space allow for architectural flourishes and specialty spaces, and they may suit older students and adjunct professors. Our students, though, are not all college-bound, and freshmen are only fourteen years old. They are much better served by welcoming homes and educational richness that teachers create when they have their own rooms. Please help us make this a reality for all our students and teachers at Grant.
Thank you. And that's the last of our public testimony. Ms. Powell, is that right? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the quarterly report from our ombudsman. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'd like to invite Judy Martin, who is our district ombudsman, up to deliver this report. And as she's getting seated, I just want to recognize that Judy was named as the co-chair of the Education Chapter of the United States Ombudsman Association. Um, so, and Judy joined us, um, about a little over a year ago to build this ombudsman program for Portland Public Schools, so, um, and is doing a fantastic job. So we're looking forward to hearing the update. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I just want to thank you too. I, I, whatever paths brought us all here tonight, we've all chosen to be here together, and the greatest thing we have is time, so I appreciate you being here, particularly you as volunteers, being here to spend your time. Thank you. I'm going to start at the beginning, this is not it. Oh, there it is. Yeah, I'm Judy Martin, I'm the district ombudsman, and, uh, more importantly to me is that I am a parent of a child in Portland Public Schools who has been there since kindergarten. And I'm going to start with what is an ombudsman? It is a term that's very, can be very confusing. If you ask five different people in a room, you get five different answers. Not everyone understands it, um, even amongst ombudsmen, it can be confusing. But there are four basic principles for all ombudsmen: neutrality, independence, confidentiality, and informality. Those are the hallmarks of the ethics of an ombudsman, and there's only four, and they're all very important. Uh, Portland Public Schools has an organizational ombudsman, which is what is, um, the role in most, uh, educational institutions. And the other type of ombudsman that you hear about in public is the classical ombudsman, which is more like the city of Portland and government, um, that type of government ombudsman. So for an organizational ombudsman, the primary duties are to work to try to resolve concerns and problems, and to bring systemic concerns to the attention of the organization. So when you see a consistent problem that doesn't ever, you know, you see the same thing happening over and over in repeated patterns, uh, bring that to the attention of the administration. So for Portland Public Schools, what that means is that, um, and this is consistent for all organizational ombudsmen, that primarily the main role is to listen and discuss concerns with people who are having a problem, to clarify policy, helping define the options that they may have available, informally looking into their concerns, helping to facilitate sometimes very difficult conversations, recommend changes to Portland Public School policies or the way they do things, and, uh, a very important part is to refer individuals to the right people so that they can get their issue resolved. Organizational ombudsmen don't advocate for any individual, they're a neutral party, they're, um, trying to help both parties come to a resolution. I don't share information within, out somebody's knowledge unless it's, um, within the bounds of law, so, you know, the things that you would have to, but most things can be confidential. Uh, organizational ombudsmen do not conduct formal investigations or make or change policy. And I really encourage you to learn more at the International Ombudsman Association website. They have a really clear page about, um, at the International Ombudsman Association, they have a clear page about organizational ombudsman's roles. So, this year has been a lot about establishing the office for Portland Public School, and I take this part of my job very seriously because, um, aside from Judy Martin sitting in the role, I want the role to be around for a long time, so I'm trying to help frame it so that it is here and somebody else could come and be here next. So, uh, it really started in July of two thousand and fourteen is when I came. I met with a lot of ombudsmen in our region, and I still keep in contact with them. I attended the United States Ombudsman Association and met a lot of, uh, ombudsmen from around the country and around the world, learned a lot there. I went again this year. And then the complaint policy was made by Portland Public School in November, it was passed by the board. The next big component was training people, essentially letting folks know that I'm here, and that's an ongoing thing, but training people in the community and also working with staff to train them about what kind of resource the ombudsman can provide and, uh, and also helping them understand the new policy. So, I want to tell you a little bit about how my office operates, and I have some guiding principles, and these are just my own guiding principles that help me do my work. I believe that complaints are healthy for an organization and they inform us of where improvements can be made. I welcome complaints, I think they're, they're there, we need to hear them, we need to hear what they are, and we need to try to address them. People can hear another person's perspect- perspective if they feel valued and understood. If they don't, it's really hard to hear somebody else's perspective. Solutions, the best solutions are found by working together. We can all find solutions, but they're not necessarily good ones. If we work together, we can find a better solution. I do believe that most people are trying to do their best. Sometimes it does not seem like that, but I believe that, that most people are trying to do their best in most situations. There's always more to the story. I've learned that time and time again in my life, it's not more true than here at Portland Public School. I have been absolutely surprised at how that, that has expanded in my mind, that there is always more to the story. Problems can be solved. I love that, problems can be solved. I, I, we're not at OHSU, we're not dealing with major medical health issues, we are dealing with problems, a lot of them are man-made barriers that can be moved, so problems can be solved. So what does a visitor, and I want to kind of, uh, mention why I use the word visitor, um, ombudsman, that's an ombudsman term, because it's not a client or a customer that would, um, negate the neutrality, it's a visitor. And also I'll say, come to the office, when I ever say, come to the office, I mean by email, by phone call, in person, or if I meet somebody out somewhere who talks to me, however I contact them. But primarily, I listen. I share information about policies and procedures and help, help them try to understand how that fits their situation. Uh, I review and discuss possible options, that's incredibly important to think of all the options. My favorite option is that you can always change how you think about something, that option is always available. I keep confident, information confidential unless somebody asks me to do something to help them. I help them contact the appropriate person who can help them with the problem, I will facilitate difficult conversations, and I make referrals to any appropriate Portland Public School formal process. I do a lot of the same things for staff. I listen to them, I contact the appropriate person to help, I work to try to find possible solutions. I meet with administrators to give input into processes and system improvement. I try to keep them informed of common issues that I keep hearing time and again, which would indicate that there's a system problem that needs to be addressed. And I train staff, I want to do a lot more of this in the coming year with listening skills and empathy, how to effectively problem solve, and the Portland Public School complaint resolution process. So this, um, section has a lot of numbers, and I'm not a big fan of numbers, they really belittle what is actually happening. Each number represents an actual person that had a problem, and I take that really seriously, and, um, so I don't like to reduce it to a number, but this is what we have and this is how I'll be sharing. So, who came? This first section is all about last year, so August first, two thousand and fourteen to July thirty-first of this year. And you can see that primarily who comes, our parents, as we would expect in a school district. Uh, I will say a little bit about unknown, that means they may be called and left a message and I wasn't able to, to reach them again, and I don't know who they were, or they had a problem and they indicated who they were. Out of jurisdiction means that it was not a Portland Public School solvable problem, it might have had something to do with the city or the county. Uh, why did they come? Mostly, it was about policies or practices. There were, uh, the next largest category is about, uh, issues they had with people. Some folks just needed resources. What was the outcome? Sometimes they got resources, most of them were informally resolved. We had fourteen formal complaints last year, uh, and there were twenty-two people that I referred to the HR process. Twenty-five were unable to complete, again, that means I was not able to get in touch with them again, uh, their phone didn't work, whatever happened that I wasn't able to get them. So in this section, I've put last year's quarterly next to this year's quarterly, so you can just see how things have changed, or stayed the same. So, uh, again, mostly parents have come. Uh, between August first and October thirty-first, we've had ninety-seven, uh, people access the office of the ombudsman, which is, uh, more than, a little more than double last year's. It's, again, mostly about policy or practice. Uh, most of them are informally resolved, and we've had eight formal complaints that were filed, I referred two to personnel, and, um, four were pending at that time. So the top concerns we've had, this is something new I've done this year, is sort of break it down by concern. And as we would expect, the top two are the, the two most prevalent things, students and student services, that includes, uh, student discipline. So those are bullying issues, cyberbullying, um, something happening between students. And then the second largest is somebody not really happy with something happening with the teacher. Then, at the beginning of the year, it will be interesting to see what happens after this, um, but at the beginning of the year, we would expect a lot of enrollment and transfer questions and concerns. And equity down there, I want to also point out, that's, that includes, um, race, income, and, can't think of the other one right now, but it's, it's a few things included in equity. So these are other concerns, um, just where the rest of them fell, a lot of different things. And I want to talk about problem solving, because that's pretty much what I do most days. So the basics are that complaints start from a place of challenge, so we're not in a really good space when it begins, that's how it starts. And to have the best outcome poss- possible, people need to feel safe, so a lot of what I do is trying to help calm the situation to a place where we can find a solution. People who are feel powerless and defensive, um, it creates unsatisfactory results for everybody. And there are some big barriers to effective problem solving. Uh, lack of empathy at the beginning, not saying, I'm sorry that you experienced this, uh, you don't have to admit culpability or think, say I did something wrong, but, but we need to at least say, I'm sorry that you're having this problem. That is, that's very challenging, and let's work together to find a solution to it. When complaints are directed to a lot of people, for example, an email that goes just sort of spread to everybody, uh, nobody acts right away because they think somebody else might be doing it, uh, getting to it, you know, nine people don't want to be calling the principal, so it takes a little bit just to organize to see who's addressing it. Um, slanderous public comments make it difficult because, um, that causes people to lose confidence and have distress, and it makes problem solving more difficult. Time constraints are hard, when people don't get responded to right away, the problems get bigger, they just grow. So there's some strategies, and, and that's going, those things are going to happen, so what do we do to overcome it? We, you know, we have to all work together to try to think of ways to overcome the barriers. Empathizing early is great, uh, saying, taking the time to say, I'm sorry, and I, I like to use the example of, uh, somebody comes to see a principal, and they're sitting there for forty-five minutes waiting because the principal had something emergent they had to take care of. If, uh, somebody in the reception area there at the school could say, I'm so sorry you have to wait, could I get you some water? Even those little things make all the difference by the time the person walks in to talk to the principal, just acknowledging what they're going through. Uh, Portland Public School staff and board members can work together to help direct, when there's a, a complaint that kind of goes to everybody, uh, if they could direct it to the ombuds office to help find the appropriate problem-solving process, that might help. to help find the appropriate problem solving process, that might help speed it along. They can develop an unreasonable complainant conduct policy. A lot of public agencies have them, because people absolutely have a right to voice their concerns. They need to voice their concerns, and they have the responsibility to work together respectfully to find the solutions. And Portland Public Schools needs to do all that is possible to stay in close contact with complainants and keep them informed. That's a really hard thing when you're waiting for an answer, and you don't hear anything, and you don't hear anything, and you don't hear anything. And so, staying in close contact is really imperative. Successful problem solving is listening, making sure that people understand what you're talking about. A big one is giving reassurance that students are safe and cared for, not just that they're safe, but that you actually care about their student. Providing options, it's really important to have options. Sometimes the options aren't that great, but people want to have a choice, whatever those options are. You also know, need to know when to end, not keep dragging it on, because sometimes it's better to have the answer you don't want, so that you can move on to the next thing that you need to do, whatever that is, than to just keep waiting and waiting for an answer. So, in seeking continuous improvement, how do we keep going from here? So, what I want to do is to continue to work with community partners to increase the accessibility, particularly for non-English speaking families, working with Portland Public School to continue annual staff training and other kinds of training. I really want to work on an effective data management system, because as the volume has been increasing, I want to be able to give you better information in a more timely way, and I need a more effective data management, so I've been working with other ombudsmen about what they use. Learning from complaints to improve services and performance, and I have added a customer satisfaction survey to the website. Not many ombudsmen have them, but I want that. I want to hear what people have to say, so that I can improve what I do, and, and continue to identify systemic concerns and bring them to the attention of the superintendent. And what staff and board can do is try not to get distracted by issues of the day and focus on the big picture, and that happens a lot. Something big will sort of blow up, for lack of a better word, and there'll be other people who have been waiting a long time to get resolution, and they have to wait even longer, and it's hard not to get distracted. Be reasonable and not perfect. A lot of people here at Portland Public School, sometimes, this happens. People are hesitant, they want to make the right decision, so it takes longer than making a decision. You need to be reasonable, but trying to be perfect can really delay process and make things harder for folks. Don't give preferential treatment to concerns that go straight to the board or the media or the superintendent. Again, those are kind of like distractions, because in the background, there's a whole line of other people who didn't do that, who are also trying to get their needs met that are just as urgent. Stay connected. Give complainants a concrete time that you'll get back to them, and get back to them, and that is hard to do. I know I've, myself, have not sometimes gotten back right when I wanted to. It's, it isn't always easy, but we always have to have that goal in mind. Continue to develop consistent and transparent complaint review practices. What might seem transparent to Portland Public School doesn't often always seem transparent to the public, so needing to help continue to make those more clear for people, and continuing to identify and address systemic concerns. And then I've added some things that you all can do, which is what we've talked about a little bit already, directing complainants to the proper channels. If people contact you, help them find where to go. And remaining neutral. It's really important for you to remain neutral in the event that a complaint comes to the board for a final decision. You need to have a, a really clean perspective. And continue to work collaboratively with the staff and the community to improve systems, so that more people have similar outcomes, so that the outcomes are consistent. And that's all that I have of my formal presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Brown?
Yeah, question. Thanks for your work. I, I like that you, appreciate that you mentioned that you'd like to do more outreach for the non-native English-speaking parents. And so, of the, you know, the data that you showed us, were any of them non-English speakers? And what's the procedure then that you use to communicate with them effectively?
Well, I get interpreters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And I speak some Spanish. I'm, I'm conversational, and I don't feel comfortable doing, I want to make sure that I completely understand, so I will get a translator for that as well.
Okay, great. I also want to know, you have a bullet here in one of the slides, "to develop an unreasonable complainant conduct policy." Can you explain what that is?
Sure.
And is something that we don't have now, and?
There's, and there's, there's a lot of really, really good information available. I could share some of that with you, but really good protocol, already established. A lot of different public agencies have that, and it's really for, so really unreasonable complaint and conduct, when it's incredibly, you know, when, when the goal is not to resolve a problem. That's not what the goal is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I'm good.
I just want to say, I appreciate the diagram on the complaint resolution process, because I think a lot of the frustration that people have experienced in the past, even prior to the establishment of your role, was that people really didn't have a sense of any reasonable expectations about how a complaint would be processed, or by whom, or in what length of time they could expect a response. I think, you know, for a lot of people, the, the confusion still lies in when a complaint is directed to the HR department, when it's directly concerning personnel in our schools. And so, the more we can do to clarify how distinct those two different paths, I think that's helpful for the public. But I think this is a step in the right direction in terms of giving people reasonable expectations.
Thanks, Judy. I had a question about the survey. You said that you have a customer satisfaction survey. Are you getting feedback on that? Is there like a certain percent of people that are giving you feedback?
No, it's, it's new.
Okay.
So, I haven't, but please share it with anybody who wants to. What I can say too, though, is I, I have heard loud and clear people who are not happy with the resolution process.
Right.
I, I know those. I also hear when people are very, very happy with, in particular, my work, which is different than that, I will say, but, so I, I feel like I get the, those extremes.
Right.
And, and I welcome both of those, but I, yeah.
Does the survey go to everyone that's accessed you? Have it, or is it just like somebody accesses you, and then they notice there's a survey?
So, lately, so since I've put it up, it's been about two weeks now, since I came back from the last ombudsman conference and talked to some folks about it, and thought that's a great idea. I have been telling people that it's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I had a turn already.
Go ahead.
All right, so.
I was graciously deferring.
So, I see the letter, because I was thinking more about the issues when it is an employee issue, and wondering if maybe we could have a, a separate kind of flow chart. But I know that we were discussing several, I think in August or so, about having a letter that explained that it's a different process when it is a personnel issue, so I appreciate that you have developed that, too. So, I'm really glad to see, you know, things moving forward. Thank you. Now, Steve.
How are you doing with the HR department and the personnel/teacher situation? Are you guys on the same page, would you say now? I mean, is it clear when somebody comes for you, to you, whether that's your stuff or it's the HR department's stuff?
And that's a great question.
Thank you.
So, when, so I want to make clear that I will take any, so the ombudsman's office, I will take any complaint. I don't shuffle off a complaint that's, so if they come to me and they want to work on something informally, I will help them. If a parent comes to me and they say, "I'm having a problem with this teacher," I'll help them problem solve how to couch that, you know, they'll tell me the whole thing. I'm like, "Can we, let's, let's think of our three top things. What do you want to get across to the teacher? So, you, you're going to want to talk to the teacher, and this is how we'll do it." And if they feel uncomfortable talking to the teacher, I'll help them access the, "Do we want to talk to the principal? Are you uncomfortable? Would you like me to talk to the principal?" So, I'll do all those things informally. Where it changes over is if they, they want to do a written formal complaint, that is a personnel process, and I'm not involved in that. So, ombudsman will take any complaint, but when it becomes a formal situation, then it goes to, hi, Sean.
Hello.
The HR.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Smith, Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer.
So, in addition to what Judy just provided you, I also wanted to say, in regards to the ombudsman office and the HR department being on the same page, essentially, we have, what, bi-weekly or weekly meetings with Judy and someone from my team, and also from the Office of School Performance, to go over all the complaints that have come in, to determine what's the right avenue door for that issue to go through.
And I want to be clear, though, I only, all, all of mine are confidential unless somebody has asked me to pursue that. I just want, I don't go over all.
I'm still going, if you want. That's okay.
Okay.
If you can't get them by telephone, do you go out to their home?
If I had their address.
If you have them, I mean, do you get that information at the start?
And I have gone out to people's homes, by the way, yeah.
Just wondering about that. The Cleveland student we had, we had talk here this evening. Now, will you follow up on that without having somebody come directly to you?
So, I didn't hear that. I might have been stepped out, or, so I don't, I don't.
Would you have, let's say, what she was talking about was harassment out at her, out at her school with a supposed rapist harassing the person who was raped, according to her. This is her story, and it's going on, and she said even today it was going on. I mean, would, would have you followed up on that, or would have?
I have not heard of that concern, but I would.
Would, I mean, would you have followed up on that?
Oh, yes, yes. Something that has to do.
Even though she didn't come directly to you? I mean, she didn't come directly to you, she came to the school board and made those comments, and it wasn't her comments. But would you follow up, or who follows up on that?
So, if somebody came to a board meeting, we?
Which she just did.
Which she just did. Like, I would generally ask Roseanne to follow up. In this case, Jolly did follow up while the, the person was here, so that we know how to follow up.
Yeah.
So.
And I guess more broadly.
I don't know if Jolly would want to speak more to that, but you're welcome to come up and say a little bit more, if you'd like.
So, I would just say that we took that, that student's concerns very seriously. We've already been in touch with the principal and are following up, and that, that is what, so in different forums, as Superintendent Smith said, the usual process at board meetings when there's testimony is to have the board manager follow up, but certainly, as Judy said, if that had come to her attention through her office.
I would have brought it to somebody immediately.
Yeah. And actually, for the board testimony one, I will also say, what we will generally do, Roseanne will follow up, so we know that we know how to reach the person, and it, and then we'll generally inform you guys of what the follow up was. And she'll, Roseanne generates that report. And it could be different people that would actually then do the actual follow up with the person, depending what the issue was.
Now, you're reporting directly to the superintendent now? How often are you meeting with the superintendent?
I've met with her, actually, in the last couple of months, every month, so.
Once a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and?
May I ask a question?
Sure, I only had one more.
Oh, go, go ahead.
It was a comment that it's nice to have school board members be neutral around those things, but sometimes that's an extreme. That's not really my role to be neutral. It's my role is to, to help. That isn't always being neutral. We should like to be neutral all the time, but it's too darn hard to be neutral all the time. I can't do it. I just thought I'd make that, so you would understand.
I just wanted to clarify more broadly, so are concerns ever referred to you by others or through other channels, other than the complainant or the visitor coming directly to you?
Yes, so, if some, so often, if some, it depends. Like, if they come through the, to the front office, if they come right through the front door, and they're, they need help, they'll direct them straight to me. So, I get a lot of people directing folks to me. Principals send people to me, teachers, secretaries, and certainly the admin staff, so, yes.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion or questions on Judy's report? So, this is now a quarterly report.
Quarterly update, and I'm just going to say, there's, I feel really pleased with the kind of work that's gone on in a really short window of time to build a program for us that didn't exist prior to Judy building it, and just the amount of reach out to colleagues and looking for best practice to really help us build a quality program. I, I can feel a difference in terms of, so, anyway, just much appreciation for your work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
All right, we are moving on to our consent agenda. The board will now consider the business agenda.
Okay, I got a thing I'm supposed to remove something now?
Okay, board members, are there any items you would like to pull for separate discussion and vote?
I didn't know. Last time, Tom went right by me, and I thought I was, he was like a train coming by, you're not going.
I'll take that as a yes.
Okay, we got amendments to existing contracts. I'd like to ask a question on that when we have a chance.
So.
It's a very end.
So, okay, so we will vote on the business agenda with the exclusion of the amendments? That's what you're requesting?
Yeah, amendments to existing contracts.
Okay.
It doesn't have a number.
This one?
I see.
Do I have a motion in a second to adopt the business agenda without the amendments?
So, move.
Second. Director Anthony moves, and Director España-Brown seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Powell, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No, there's not.
All right, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The, the business agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
All right. The board will now discuss the amendments contained at the end of the business agenda.
I'd just like to know, and I know Tony's here, so I just want to know, would you come in on the wire glass? We're spending, that's what I'm making, a lot of money, $150,000 or so, to remove the wire glass, and the wire glass is a problem because, can you just explain that? Would that be all right?
Tony Magliano, Chief Operating Officer. So, the history behind this is actually, we're required to replace all the wired glass that's in our buildings, because it's a, it's a safety issue. In fact, we, Jolly may know the history of the case, where an individual put their leg or arm through it, and we've been directed to replace this, and it's, it's millions of dollars to go through the school district and replace wired glass. It's fire-rated, and we've been doing it for a number of years. We've been incrementally going through, we prioritized first those places where interaction with humans was most likely to occur, so we've been, and we've been stepping through all of our buildings, replacing this over time.
Is it state law?
I don't believe, it might be state law.
I mean, wire glass originally was put in for, because of safety.
Right, and now.
Better than the other type of glass.
Right, but they found that this particular glass, obviously, isn't as safe as what they thought it was.
You weren't here when they put it in, so you don't get fired over it.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that was good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be next week, Tuesday.
Do we have to vote?
Oh, excuse me. So, we.
Wire glass proposal.
Need to vote on the amendment to the business, business agenda, wiring, regarding the wire glass. Do I have a motion for that amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. With that, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Wow.
And we'll be back next week.
Nice job.